will be 2014-16 Joshua Green. And number eight will be 2016-21 Matthew and Lauren Kamen. And number nine will be 2016-05 Denardo Capital Court. Is that Sarah's all applicants up to date with their taxes? Thank you. All right, so the first item on the agenda is 2016-18 Hope and Suzanne Maile.
Yep. So, since the last time.
Excuse me, you have to take the microphone.
Yep.
And identify yourself.
Patty Steinsteiner, Gotham Design, Community Development, representing the Maileys. Since the last time, I think we've really done is address.
Patty Steinsteiner? Is the microphone on?
Okay, so I'll start over. Patty Steinsteiner from Gotham Design and Community Development, representing the Maileys. Since the last time, I think the only thing we've really done is addressed, which is significant, we addressed the engineering memos, those points, but this project needs to go before the zoning board. We have filed for that. We will be on their August meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. And I guess there's two options. One would be if you wanted to have us come back through September, or if the issues have been addressed enough that if we get the variances, we're all set. But that's up to you guys.
Did any members of planning board have any comments on this item?
When was this reviewed?
At the last meeting?
Okay. So everyone was okay with that this is, it was undocumented and they built it, then now they want to just get it approved?
Well, it wasn't built by the Maileys.
It wasn't built by the Maileys and it went into the property.
Yeah, I'm going blind, so I'm just gonna go by. I looked at it, I didn't even know it was looked at before.
Okay.
So what I saw was that the survey that you supplied didn't have it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So was this documented in some way, the one that was over the property line? Was that approved at another, at a previous time?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so this is what's on the books is like what's been approved?
No. Well, that's, aren't they trying, aren't they moving it back?
No, it's a question about was it there in any shape, way, or form in an approved way prior to this?
How long have the Maileys had it?
Since the early seventies.
Yes. So this existed for, maybe since the seventies.
Okay, so that means that at some time it was built without a permit?
Correct.
Okay.
So it sounded like it's illegal. Was a permit needed?
No.
We don't know.
It was here in the south.
Well, if they say it's built without a permit, it sounds like you're saying it's illegal.
Well, it's undocumented.
Yeah.
Right, so what happens is undocumented then is to try to get legalized.
Correct.
Right. So my only question about this is the precedence for this. Because I own a property like this, well then I'm gonna say, hey, they let them build this deck all the way basically to the property line, so I should be able to do this. And I just, that's my question. Does anyone have? That was my issue when I looked at it.
I think the issue is that it goes back over forty years.
Right.
And so.
It's good.
There was culture requirement permits.
And the separance.
The problem was that decks and patios were very loosely approved in the seventies. This may have been approved in one of those fashions. You don't know.
And it was there when the Maileys bought the property, exactly as it is today. And the neighbors were aware of the fact that it was on, Columbia was aware it was on their property. And what the Maileys are proposing to do, because the deck needs to be repaired, is they're pulling it back.
I clearly get that, and it's not really about the Maileys. It's about this being a precedence for something else later on. And I just wanted to find out how the board looked at that.
If we did nothing, it would stay off, it would be any other guy's property if we did nothing.
I guess we missed the point. I'm just trying to say that if, if one approves this, and then the zoning board gets this approved, I think this is precedence for someone else to come in and declare that they should be given the same rights. And is that appropriate?
I don't know that this is the first time this has been.
Counselor, you got a point of view on that?
Yeah.
The fact that it's been there for fifty years?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see. Legally, I don't, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. This is, if he gets the variance from the zoning board, this is a sort of, what would you say, really unusual case. But that's up, that's up to the zoning board of appeals.
Right. I also think it has to do with, when you look at what's next to this deck, which is nothing. You know, it's not like it butts up right against it. I know that you're thinking about a precedent, but I think you also have to look at the totality of it.
Yeah, I would agree. If, if it's not infringing upon, you know, it doesn't become an issue for the next door neighbor, and rather, the next door neighbor would rather see this happen at this point. And the Maileys obviously want this to happen, because they're not gonna be able to sell the house with that deck hanging out onto somebody else's property. So I think, yeah, I think this is an issue that George, where it goes back so far, you know, it's not as if this, these people built this deck in the last five years, and now suddenly they want to come back and try and legalize this. Of course, they could move for adverse possession of the property and take it.
That's not merely closed personnel.
I'm being facetious.
Well, I know people who would do that, so.
I mean, unless you have an issue with George, I mean, I really don't. I think, in this instance, again, as it's existed for so many years, and it's institutional use next door, that really doesn't have a problem with this, and it doesn't become an issue for them.
I'm not gonna make any sure.
Okay.
All right. Let me just make one other point. He's actually not going to the zoning board of appeals for the deck, he's going for the walkway and the patio, because in cutting the deck back, he's reduced, so he doesn't really need a variance for that. He's reducing the nonconformity, which you are allowed to do. He does have to go to the zoning board, but it's for an undocumented, I think it was a patio and, and walkway.
It's also for coverage.
Isn't it? So it's not for a side yard setback?
For a side yard and a coverage.
And a coverage, okay. It is, both. Okay. Okay. So, any other comments from the board?
I think that in the cases like this, first of all, all the neighbors have been notified there were no objections. And also, I think we have to address it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the audience regarding this matter? No? Well then, I mean, if we're all okay with it, I just have a resolution adopted, subject to the ZVA approving it.
Well, yes, it may happen. Whereas in June 23, the Maileys applied for site plan approval to repair and modify a deck on their house at A Arslay Terrace, which is located in the View Preservation District. Modification of the deck would reduce it in size and eliminate its incursion into the neighbor's property, but it was determined that the deck and an existing walkway were undocumented and therefore required site plan approval. Variances are required for coverage incursion into the side yard. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated yesterday stated there were no engineering issues. And the deck and walkway have no impact on the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on July 6th and tonight. It's a type-two action under SECR. Resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Mailey Residence," subject to the zoning board of appeals granting variances for coverage in the side yard setback.
Have a motion to accept the residue? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two is 2016-20 Viral Patel on Camden Court. Just making note, Hillary Chanel has recused herself on this matter.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing Viral Patel and Neerja Patel Swimming Pool. We had, this project is the second time in front of the board we had some engineering issues that we picked up, and also corrected coverage calculation based on the specific technique used for calculating coverage in this. We have two small things that are open, relatively small things, a tree that needs to be indicated as protected that we promised that we did not pick up, and we will pick that up. Are there any other questions? Or is that answered?
Any comments from any of the board members? This isn't the one with the show. No. This is just the pool. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Doug, were you okay? Did you get the drainage calculations? Did you, in legible format?
Well, still waiting.
Okay, so it's subject to those.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Marion, you have a resolution for this?
In 2016, Viral Patel applied for site plan approval to construct a pool patio on his property at one Camden Court, which is located in the Legend Hollow subdivision. And it was determined that an existing deck and patio were undocumented and therefore also required site development plan approval. The proposed and existing improvements would not exceed the coverage permitted by the subdivision's limited site development plan approval. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memo dated July 6th made a number of comments really addressing the subsequent submission. Planning Board held a public hearing on July 6th and tonight as a type-two action. Resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Patel Swimming Pool," subject to addressing the comments in Han's August 2nd, 2016 memo.
Do you have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three is 2016-19 Jaclyn Leonardo and Andres Sorelnik, Seventeen Matheson Park.
John Malone again, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing Jaclyn and Andres. We have made some revisions to this that were, that were addressing mostly site layout stuff. We did, we changed the construction access to avoid a sensitive tree, and relocated the stormwater system to tighten up the impacts in the area. The, Doug is still waiting for, I think there was again a question of illegibility with the calculations, and there was some additional detail in terms of the pretreatment Jason. But we also need to go to zoning board for coverage on this.
Okay. And I think also, did you, did you see the memo from Lucille Muns? And just a comment regarding, I think you were, you're gonna use Vinka Minor's ground cover, and she was just making a recommendation that you might want to consider a different ground cover that is more tolerant. I think that Vinka may not be as tolerant as, so you might want to take a look at that, John. All right. Any other comments from any of the board members? No? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Marion, you have a resolution for this one?
Yeah, in June 2016, Jaclyn Leonardo and Andres Sorelnik applied for site plan approval to construct a two-story addition to their house, reconstruct an existing shed, and add to an existing patio and porch at Seventeen Matheson Park, which lies in the View Preservation District. The improvements would exceed permitted coverage, and the shed would be located within the side yard setback, requiring variances from the zoning board of appeals. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memo dated July 6th listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in the subsequent submission. The village's landscape architect made several comments which were addressed to her satisfaction. The proposed improvements would have no impact on the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. The Planning Board held a public hearing on July 6th and tonight as a type-two action. Resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Sorelnik Residence Prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture," subject to the zoning board of appeals granting variances for coverage in the side yard setback, and subject to satisfactorily addressing the comments in the Han memorandum dated August 2nd.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Patty Steinsteiner, Gotham Design and Community Development, representing Gluck-Ziff. We have been, before you on this before, you sent us to the ZVA. We got the required variances from the ZVA. There were a couple of issues in Han's memo which needed to be addressed, which have been. I think we've got everything, but Doug can speak for himself, so if we're good, I don't know, if you guys have some questions about some others?
No, I think Doug's memo says, therefore, we have no objection to approval of the site plan application for this one. Any comments from any of the board members on this?
No.
Any comments from anyone in the audience? No, then we have a resolution on this, Mary.
Whereas Jeffrey Gluck and Amy Ziff applied for site plan approval to construct a staircase and fence on their property at Five Sterns Ridge, the proposed improvements would exceed permitted coverage and therefore require a variance from the zoning board of appeals, which at its meeting of June 21st granted the variance for coverage. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated June 2nd and July 1st made a number of comments which were satisfactorily addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on June 1st and August 3rd. It's a type-two action. Resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Jeffrey Gluck and Amy Ziff Both Prepared by Gotham Design," subject to nothing.
May I have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, no, sure. Yes, I want the permit.
Next item is 2016-24 Henry Rodgen and Barbara Cohen, Twenty-One Matheson Park.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing Barbara and Rodgen Cohen. This, this is an application associated with a new fence, dog run fence, and some hardscape that's associated with the driveway on a large piece of property in Matheson Park.
Is there an existing fence there now, John?
There was an existing chain link fence that's been replaced with the.
Has been or will be?
In fact, has been.
And you're here now. Is this legalizing something?
This is a legalization.
How recent was the replacement fence?
About a three weeks ago.
It's a violation, it's a violation, and they're curing it.
We, the fence, the fence is following the same pattern it is. Showing the western edge of the property near the train tracks, there was an existing metal fence in, shown in this area, a chain link fence. And there was an existing path, I believe, sort of a drive path, that there's a two, you know, a hardscape, a new stone hardscape that's been added, and a wood fence in the same location. That's the limit of impact. We did do a coverage calculation, and we applied coverage to this path. Even though it's on a driveway, we treated it as hardscape, and it meant the coverage requirement.
Is there any landscaping being proposed as part of this?
There isn't. There isn't. I'm not sure.
I thought it said originally there was, I thought it said some landscaping on the fence.
Yeah, I'm not, I think, it's meant to be open, and I think it even has little rent houses in it.
Go out for the road, or the path, the landscaping.
This, this has actually been.
No, no.
This path, this has a grass strip in the center, and I think they like saw it in between. And the pavers are a drive-on concrete paver that looks like stone, sort of like a slate. This, this little acre here is a gravel, a decorative gravel.
And this is a dog run. This is going to be the village, don't it?
Any other comments from any of the board members? Ed or Doug, did you have any comments on this? All right. Any comments from anyone in the public? No? I think, I think we can move ahead with the resolution on this then, too.
Okay, I did do one in case. Whereas in July 2016, Rodgen and Barbara Cohen applied for site plan approval to construct it on their property at Twenty-One Matheson Park, which is located in the View Preservation District. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memo dated August 2nd stated that there were no engineering issues. The driveway and fence would have no impact on the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the application tonight as a type-two action under SECR. Resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Cohen Residence Prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture." That's enough.
Before I sign this, was the violation settled?
They have thirty days to cure it. They presented the cure.
Is there a penalty of some sort?
There's a penalty, there's double fees, minimum $100, double fees.
Was it all collected?
Yes. Well, half collected, the rest is collected, put in a permit.
Maybe we should hold this before we.
No, you can't give them a permit. It doesn't work that way.
The sheriff.
Just, we need a, a. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Somebody help me out, come on. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oops. For the record, yes, we do. All right.
No, John.
Next item is 2016-23 Joseph Berry and Susan Stewart, Sixty-Eight Riverview Road.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing Jeff and Susan, Susan Sauer, Jeff Berry. The project is for the expansion of an existing patio and a new retaining wall on the driveway. Sorry, the drawing is relatively small, but it proposed patio is being extended out to an existing door on the rear of the house, and there's a new retaining wall being installed here on a steep slope at this point. The issue that has been raised is there's an existing shed that is in the setback that is allowed. So that we, Ed and I talked about it, we spoke to the client, and they would rather try with the, with the zoning board of appeals to get that in place. The house does not have a garage at the moment. This former garage space, when it was originally designed, is now part of the interior of the house. It's a small shed there, so they sort of need that shed for storage.
The garage that was, and is now living space, was that legalized?
Yes.
It was unaccounted.
Yeah, that was taken. Yeah, the house is an odd house that has a single car garage, that I think was related to a chauffeur or a maid.
What's the purpose of the retaining wall? Something to hit when you're coming in with the car?
It's a steep, the, the house, there's a big ledge of, of rock, a ledge, and the house is built on ledge, so if you go into the basement of the house, there's actually ledge rock through the basement, and there's all this water going across the top of the ledge rock. So the attempt is to try to use the wall to collect some of that water.
And what about the drainage behind the wall? You're gonna have the weep holes and.
Yeah, there'll be weeps, and, you know, we'll have a, try to reduce the hydrostatic pressure on the back of the wall. It's an attempt to try.
It's an attempt to keep the water from running around the rock and into the basement.
Yeah. Yeah, of course.
Any other comments from the board?
The Lucille had a comment about a tree being marking.
Oh, yes, so on the.
And ECB, I think, had the same issue.
In the tree protection plan, because there's a mature tree, I can't remember the species of the, quite a nice tree there. The patio improvement is in this area. We would typically show a more substantial protection there, but I think we would rather still have the construction come through the driveway than have the risk of erosion on this side. So if we do show a larger one, we would probably show it around the drip line to this side, and maybe square it off at the bottom to allow some passage between the corner of the house and this side. Because I think there's not really excavation on this side, but there would be work on this side, where there's more excavation and risk on this.
Well, what I noticed, I thought that the patio may start getting into the drip line of that tree. The actual excavation, because it was, I went out there and took a look at the tree. It's a pretty, pretty substantial tree, with a pretty good canopy on it. And my concern was the same as what Lucille and the ECB had, that you really need to have tree protection in a larger circle around it. And my suggestion, I know you showed a, a stockpile area in the driveway.
Right.
Which, maybe what, if you move that out of there, then the workers and construction people could come around the north side of the tree.
This side.
Sorry, not the north side, it would be the east side of the tree, I guess.
You're talking about this way.
Come around that way, and get to the work area, and then you could protect the tree.
And then just protect it right, right to the corner. Okay, we can do that.
And then the other thing, too, is I noticed on the plan, I think you should revise the, the erosion sediment control. You had a hay bale fence going across the driveway, which doesn't really make any sense, because you're, it's all the way at the mouth of the driveway.
Right.
So I think you really, if you're gonna do the hay bales, you ought to pull it back up.
Pull it to there, where the.
Pull it back up where the construction actually is, and then the silt fence, too, you had a silt fence sort of going diagonally across the front yard. Again, I think you could do the silt fence parallel to the work area in the front yard, and then hook it around the house, no, on the other side, there, and then hook it around like that.
That would do it.
Because I don't think you're doing any work really in the front yard.
No. I think there was new, I mean, new walkway.
There's a new walkway going in there, right. So, and it looked like it was pretty level there, so if you, if you put that silt fence hooking around, I think you'd prevent any erosion there. And then the same thing, if you, if you move that, the stockpile area, and bring the hay bale fence up the driveway.
Stockpile area, would we keep it on the driveway, but just move it out? Or would we?
I don't know, it's, where are you gonna be stockpiled?
It's really just the excavation associated with the.
It's probably the wall, and the gravel and the sand that washes into the road.
Then you want to put something right around.
We've tarped it in the past, like, we've just left it on the driveway and tarped it. We could pull it more away from the tree and have them.
Well, then put hay bales around that, and then, and put a, put a tar.
Hay bale on blacktop isn't gonna do much.
What would you suggest?
Tarpe it.
Just tarpe it?
Yeah.
Why don't you show that as an item on the plan? All right? So I think with those changes, we'd be okay. Doug, did you have any other comments on this? You had some comments in here, but you're waiting for.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Some of them we've already taken.
The silt fence, like we talked about, and just some other minors.
Okay. So I think we could, you, and you still have to go to the ZVA, so we could do a resolution subject to going to the ZVA on this.
All right. I prepared a resolution just in case. In July 2016, Susan Stewart and Jeff Berry applied for site plan approval to construct a retaining wall and extend an existing patio on the property of Sixty-Eight Riverview Road. It was determined that an undocumented shed on the property is located in the required rear side yards. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated August 2nd, 2016 made several comments pertaining to the drawings. The village's landscape architect, Lucille Muns, in a memo dated July 29th, made recommendations about a tree on the site that might be impacted. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the application tonight as a type-two action. Resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Stewart-Berry Residence Prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture," subject to, one, addressing the comments in Han's August 2nd, 2016 memorandum, which included what you said, Pat, and Lucille Muns's July 29th, 2016 staff report, which included what she was talking about. And, two, either removing the shed or obtaining variances from the. And two, either removing the shed or obtaining variances from the zoning board of appeals for incursion of the shed into the required rear and side yards. So if they don't get the variance from the zoning board, they'll have to remove the shed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Show me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Next item is 2014-16, Joshua Breen, 2012 Riverdable Family Trust.
Good evening, Steve Lopez, landscape architect, here with the Paddy. It's the architect on the job. And I think there are two outstanding.
My job's not very.
Pardon me?
Designer.
Designer. Sorry. I think there are two outstanding questions, as I recall, pretty much with this larger issue kind of questions. Lauren had to do the coverage and a number of walls are removed to bring the coverage into alignment, and I think Ed can vouch for that. And the second issue was a small question about putting some additional plants alongside the building here, which we did. And so to Lucille Muns about that, I believe she's on board with that. I added more plants than she asked for, and also a few are out from the, as these things evolve with new owners and so on. And as the builder looks at the job site, he wants it to look nice, so he'll add a few things here and there. But all the approved items have been installed.
Did you see Doug Hahn's memo?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So you'll have to do some testing behind those walls, since those walls were not.
Well, he suggested that it might be required. If it is, then.
Well, I think it should be, you have an eight-foot-high wall back there at this point.
Right.
That really, we have no idea what's behind there or how it was constructed. I think that needs to be documented to the satisfaction of a structural engineer on your side and Doug Hahn's satisfaction and Ed Mann's satisfaction.
Yeah.
All right? And then also, there was an issue on the site plan. There was no fence shown on that eight-foot-high wall, but on the landscape plan, there was a fence shown.
The landscape plan, I think, was a more complete plan with regard to fences. I wish my concern was anything over three or four feet. You have a fence for the family. So I'd actually show taxes on all three of the walls.
But that should be documented, then, on the site plan, that.
All right, we'll let that.
Any comments from anyone else? One other thing, should go out there and check that sill fence. That sill fence was down. The other day, I was up there on Sunday, and there was mud at that catch basin at the bottom of the street there.
Yeah, I saw that. I think Bob's already taken care of it. I'll leave here and I'll check it.
So the history was that these are, I didn't realize that these were built already, and this is a legalization of something that's already been built.
Yeah, well, we call it revision because I think that's CL on it yet.
So revision from the original approval.
Right, so I'll, I'll just ask a question. I looked at it blind, not knowing that, and I questioned why the lower wall.
This wall.
Yeah.
It's a great change issue there, to try and bring some level area here at the upper level, also off the eccentric doorway and at the lower level.
What's below that?
Pardon me?
What's below that? See, like, in the back, to me, I just, it's in the back. That's not, that's on the street, right there.
That was always on the plan.
This bottom wall?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that was one of Lucille's comments, though, to put additional landscaping in front of that particular wall.
And we are doing that. Yeah, I understand that. Okay, so you're saying that this was on a plan that was approved?
Yes.
Whenever.
The walls that were here were approved. These are the walls that got added. And what that enabled us to do, when we were excavating, this rock ledge kind of goes into here, so this was the good way to tie it all together. And we had tons of rocks, so it seemed like a better way to do it. Instead of taking more of this out, we weighed it out.
And when were those walls approved? Do you not remember the date?
Um, I, these were.
No, the lower ones.
Um, when we got approved last year. We had a wall that was around the site that got removed. We had these two walls alongside the house, so that you'd be able to walk out from the family room. And you also have a play area down in the basement with two windows here, so to be able to have those windows, have that door, you needed to change the level at that point.
Any other comments from any of the board members?
Nothing to do, yes, but in the future, as we say, these walls, the record doesn't know which ones you're pointing, north, south, east, west.
I'll make sure you do that differently.
Doesn't make any difference here, but.
Any comments? Any comments from anyone in the audience? No? I think we have a, do we have a resolution on this, or no?
No.
No, we don't, okay. So still be, to make those changes and get that, and we want to get the walls certified, that's right. Want to get the walls certified that they're okay.
Yeah, actually, is that a matter for planning board, or is that a matter for building board? Their choice. Okay.
Now, I'd like to see, make sure that you guys are okay with the walls. You guys meaning the village engineer and the building inspector.
I just curious, question for Ed, was there anybody, building inspector, looking at the walls that they ever built?
There's no point in inspecting them. They're, they're still.
Okay.
How are we, how are we doing inspection?
You know, you can dig a hole in the back, you take it out and back up. Whatever you guys choose, we'll work with you.
Whatever you put.
Yeah. You can have the engineer come out and certify.
He will be here tomorrow. Pump stop on.
It's okay.
It's not a footing, it's the rock goes down, it's a dry wall.
It is a dry stone wall, so it's done as the details approved by the planning board and by the village show it, which is that it goes down a certain distance below grade, but it's large rocks. It's not like poured concrete or anything like that. And it allows water to percolate through, which is, I think, the.
All right.
Yes, that's it, thank you. Our next item is 2016-21, Matthew and Lauren Kamen, Five Artsley Terrace. Were you repeating yourself on this one?
Yeah.
James Kraut from Studio Park. Our clients, Matthew and Lauren, are trying to take a pre-existing garage that was built over the north and west setback and try to build a screened porch over that garage. Previously, there was a deck, a deck in this location that was removed a while ago. There's basically a door to nowhere. That's in this region here. In addition to that, they're trying to build an elevated deck that's at the level of that new screened porch.
So you're saying the garage was used, the garage roof was used as a deck?
In a previous iteration. It's no longer there right now, it's just a rubber membrane roof.
An elevation where you can post the building?
The elevation of the deck itself?
Elevation view.
Yeah, sure.
So, crack falls off in the back of the site.
Please use the mic. What's, what's on, sir?
Cray falls off in the back of the site, so there's about eight to nine foot of exposure. This is where the existing roof is right now. There's nothing there. There's an existing door behind this proposed porch. And there's an existing deck that's much smaller than this that we're trying to connect the dots to. Essentially, it's no change to cover, as we're removing a stone patio that extends the distance of the rear deck. So essentially, trading things in kind a little bit higher in the air.
Does a new screened-in porch work with setbacks?
Uh, no, that's the one variance that we are going to be requesting because the existing garage itself is already over the setback. Half of the building's already over the setback.
Do you have any photographs of what is between your client's house and the house to the north?
I'm not sure if Chris can.
You can see in this image right here, essentially, it's just grass and then some greenery covering the other one. Here's the door to nowhere, essentially. So what we're trying to do is enclose on top of that with an enclosed porch.
The house, I don't know what you, is northwest, south, east. There's a house, there's a house right to the north here?
Correct.
So the house would be looking at the side of the new enclosed porch?
Yes.
And that house follows the setback?
I'm not sure. Almost every house in Artsley Terrace seems to be behind, over a setback in one way or another.
I think it would be good to find out what the setback is from that existing house to the.
Just the distance from one to another.
Yes, the ability to your property line. And also, what's the distance from your client's property line to the garage, your garage? What's that distance at?
It's nine and a half feet from property line to the corner of the garage.
Is there any fence or any plantings between the two houses?
Uh, there is plantings on the neighbor's side, not on my owner's side.
Any fence there? Is that shrill out there that is showing there?
What is that?
I think it's just protection, because these pictures were from winter, yeah. Just shrubber, yeah.
So it's shrill, protecting shrubs?
Correct.
On the north face.
Right.
And then how high, on that photograph, around the middle on the left, how high will the enclosed porch be compared to the existing house?
At the spring point of the roof is essentially at this white line, the existing clyward sided. And at its peak, it's maybe three feet taller than that.
So go to underneath that window, that double window?
Yeah, it stops just under the window.
It does not extend over the existing roof of the garage?
No, it's, that footprint is the footprint that we're proposing.
The north side is gonna have a new big wall. The enclosed porch is gonna.
Unenclosed porch.
So it's gonna be all windows on the north side of that enclosed porch?
It'll be open majority of the time, but it'll be screened. It will not be glass, it will not be conditioned.
And it's open from floor to ceiling?
Yes.
And I think there's also a tree, I think, in the backyard, too? I think ECB had mentioned it.
Correct. There's a dogwood that just wasn't labeled. This is the one that wasn't labeled. There's a maple as well that's further down that you can't see. It just wasn't labeled.
Okay, but I think you should show tree protection, tree protection around that.
We looked at the engineering review, and there's a laundry list of items that are easy for us to resolve.
Any other comments?
Could you show an elevation view from?
This is essentially the southern view, but the opposite version of it is what the northern neighbor sees. So it's essentially screen, painted cedar post and screen in between.
It would be good if you took that top elevation there and then penciled in the existing, well, the existing house to the north.
The house to the north has a probably at least a twenty-foot, twenty-foot, probably to the building. If you fail, you go to the first page. I'm sorry.
You mean the pictures?
Yeah, the first page here is submitted. Tax parcel map. This is the house.
I'm talking.
This is the house in question. This is the porch, right here. So this is the house, this basically has the same setback issues with the west side and the north side, but not with the south side. Okay, and then this one will have setback issues with all of them. Okay?
Yeah. Yes, that helps. Do you, anybody want to see this?
I was just concerned when you're on the north side looking south, that there's a new.
There's gonna be a new structure there, and that's why I was asking, what is the screening?
It may be screened, but it's gonna look like a wall.
It's still there, yes.
What is the landscaping and any fencing in between the two properties?
Nothing proposed at this time, except for their plantings. We can grab a couple more photos that are more clear for that side, just for explanation sake. And add that to the elevation.
I think that would be helpful. Okay. Any comments from anyone in the audience? No? All right, then, I guess we'll see you back here in September. And you're gonna need to go to the ZBA also for this first one.
Can we go to the ZBA before I come back here?
I think we'd like to see it first, get a better view, you know. At least those photographs showing it.
Sounds like the answer was no.
Yes.
Freedom of the record.
Correct.
Yeah, I think you just have to explain better why, too. Because this is, in my, you know, this is, there's setbacks for reasons. And to come up with just saying, well, I have a garage here, I just want to build it up, you're making a non-compliant condition even more non-compliant. So there has to be a valid reason, and it isn't just because it's there. So I think you really have to, at least for me, explain it better and show what the visual impact is.
Next item is 2016-05, Denardo Capital Corp.
We got, we got, we'll put up a wall there. You need to.
Uh, no, just.
You don't need to.
Anyway, we need a third.
I just need a third.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am David Cooper from Lauper, McZarin, and Steinmetz. We're representing the Denardos on this subdivision and site plan application for 30 South Broadway and 40 South Broadway. We're here tonight to continue the public hearing and review some of the outstanding questions that came up at the last hearing, or portion of the hearing regarding architecture. We have a very, I'd say, quick presentation for you, because some of the slides, I think, that were asked for, we didn't have in the last meeting, so we're just gonna go through it. There are a couple of modifications that we've made to the plans already, but as you'll see, you know, quickly, this is a shorter presentation tonight, although I know Ed is betting on a longer one. But we are still in the process of updating plans per the comments of your professionals. Obviously, the engineering comments, locations of stormwater management improvements, and various other comments on engineering. Landscaping, the Denardos have hired an arborist that picked up the request of Muns, landscape architecture, and are finalizing the survey, but also the updated landscape architecture plans, as well as the surveyors working on revising the preliminary plat, so that it'll be in a format, hopefully for you to approve preliminarily or approve as a preliminary plat, the next time we see you. What we are planning on doing is submitting this, I believe the submission deadline is actually a week later this month, which helps us a lot, so that by your September meeting, you should have everything before you, certainly, we believe, to complete the secret process and issue what we hope will be a negative declaration, as well as hopefully approve the preliminary plat, so that we can go to the county and get everything that we need in terms of utilities and the Department of Health, so that we can get them back and back to your board for final plan approval, as well as site plan approval. What I'll do is turn it over to the team. You know, you know the team, I don't want to introduce everybody, but we'll go through what we've got, and then the public hearing is still open, certainly willing to answer any of the questions that come up. We would ask at the end of tonight, unless something else comes up, that the board close the public hearing, and then hopefully we'll be back before you in September with everything else that you need. So, without further ado.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Anthony Guccione, Associate Principal at JMC. Do you mind if I sit again, so I don't block the screen like I did last time? That worked pretty well. So this is the current site plan. I just wanted to go over a couple of items that were discussed last month. One of the items that was requested was that a sidewalk be added along Station Road. So the Denardos have agreed to construct a sidewalk here along Station Road, three-foot-wide concrete sidewalk that would extend from the underpass under the aqueduct there, and then connect to the existing sidewalk here along South Broadway. And then, on the visuals, you want? And then, on the visuals, we wanted to go over a couple of visuals, I understand there was questions about the visual looking from Gilcrot Aqueduct into the site.
Excuse me, before you go on, there is enough road right-of-way to construct a three-foot sidewalk all on municipal property?
There is.
Okay. All the way to the tunnel?
Correct, you see the red line, that's the property line?
Yes.
And then, we're actually, I'll look at this. So see it's further away here, so I believe it stays about the same distance from the road there, but I will confirm that.
Yeah, you're going to get a survey or something of the property so that we can see, make sure that it's in the
We'll start with some GIS information, and if we need a survey, we'll figure that out.
Have you worked at all with the village officials about what happens within the tunnel? Because as it is now, which is a great idea to do this, is that it would make a lot of sense to move the pride path on that same side. Because as it is right now, you go right to there and then you have to cross over and then goes through. And frankly, that's a much better visual path for kids.
There's about a two or three foot wide striped area, like you said, right?
I was going to flip it to the other side.
It would just be striping, I think we'd be able to handle that.
There's lighting that they put in as well.
In the tunnel?
Yes.
Along the wall, along the south wall. In addition to the roof lighting, there's more lights on the west, south wall.
You think that light illuminates the other side enough?
That was meant just for the pathway.
All right, take a look at that.
Be nice to see about doing something about that.
Okay. Then go into the old Gilcrot Aqueduct again. You've seen this before, this is the existing condition looking from the north end of the site, north end of the old Gilcrot Aqueduct adjacent to our site into the site now. You see the existing residential building there, you see the existing stone wall. And we've updated the visual now to provide the current elevations at the rear of the buildings. So again, you know, looking into the same view, you'll see the second floor of those units. This is the duplex in this location, and this is the end unit from the three-unit building adjacent to it. And then this is further south on the aqueduct looking into the site. Here you see a little bit of one of the residences, just the top of another residence, and this is the existing brick wall in that location. And then we've superimposed the new building. If you recall, it was requested that these peaked roofs were added, and then that the chimneys actually be lowered in this elevation, so Mr. Shavany went ahead and made those changes to the building, we dropped them into this visual. And again, you see the second floor and just a small portion of the upper portion of the first floor. And I think that's what was asked for, for the visuals, if everybody's okay with that, we'd like to move Rich Pearson
The other visual that was of a concern, there were some people in the audience as well as us, that we wanted to confirm what it looked like from Station Road looking up the hill.
We have that.
Because it might have been a little different than this because of mass.
It was a little different, yeah.
And what is it now?
Well, we'll show you, again, this is the view, go back to existing, existing view from Station Road, you see the McCon Stern House here, see the fee building up top, my battery just died. And then this is with the two duplexes added in the top of the hill.
But again, now, what these, let's just make it clear to everybody, these Photoshop drawings, what they don't show are all of the trees that are being removed at the top of the fee property. So that some of those trees that you see there are really not going to be there.
But in this location, there's really not tree removal, there's a couple in the corner a bit, but there's not really much tree removal under, I don't think there are really, I'm checking, but any trees being removed in this location, we're staying far enough from the slope. And then actually some of these new evergreens at the base of the buildings, you can hardly see, we would add into our new plants. We would actually add new trees, but really not take trees out.
Well, I think that there's one 30-inch tree that's coming out at the back. But beyond that though, there's that 72-inch tree that's coming out, and there's several other large trees that are in the middle of the side. But what you have to remember is, they form a tree canopy over the entire property extending down that hillside. So I want people to understand, that's not going to be there, okay?
The tree is further set into the side of the property.
You're going to see a tree line that mounds up to the top of the hill, then suddenly it's going to be gone, and you're going to see some roofs and some chimneys, and then you're going to pick up the Broadway buffer going down that side. Because I just want people to understand that, because I've been around photo shops for 20 years, and I know what they show and what they don't show. And what they don't show is the reality, and it looks pretty on the Photoshop, but that's not the way it turns out, okay? That may be what it looks like 10 years from now, but it's not going to be the way it looks when the buildings are first constructed.
And of course, you know, this is a winter view, so in summer you really wouldn't see it.
Summer certainly it's not going to be as bad, but again, I don't want people to think that, oh, these are hardly going to see these buildings. They are going to be visible.
You will love them.
Again, because the other thing is, those buildings are much closer to the ridge line on Station Road than the existing building. You see that here, existing building, that existing building is over 200 feet setback from the ridge line. So it looks like that, you only see the roof of that building, but you're going to see two or three stories of the new buildings. All right, you're going to lose a little bit of the bottom if you do plant a number of evergreens back there, that'll hide some of that, but the upper stories are going to be visible.
And we're making no claims that you won't be able to see any buildings looking into the, I mean, we're making attractive architecture, we're landscaping the site attractively, so you will see, just like any other, you know, residential building, you will see houses.
We want the public to understand that.
Unless you just can't see it because of the trees that are not going to be there. You don't, it doesn't appear that you have the architectural features in the back of these units that you do on the back of
We can show you the elevations, they are a little different in this location.
Oh, okay.
Glenn, you want to talk about that a little? This is the back of the three-story walkout building, and
Walkout being the ones that face out?
Correct. Because those have an exposed basement here?
It's a slightly different architectural feature roof line, but it is a different, it's not a straight line roof line.
Correct, the reason for that being that, we're stuck with that 35-foot building height, so what Glenn had to do was take the third floor and push it up into the roof on this unit.
From my point of view, I wanted to stay away from the straight line, direct slope.
But we did, you know, Glenn did bring the same materials down to the basement, the brick comes down, the chimneys come down with the stone, it's not just a concrete finished basement.
I was more concerned with the roof line. And it is sort of broken up.
Did you do an analysis of, I wasn't here last month, so I don't know what happened, but I remember previous to that, we talked about the difference between the video that was done and what you were presenting, and that it was a little bit different of a scale. And that, it was at least my opinion that the, and the village, some of the trustees said the same thing, that they based their opinion based on that video. And I would like to see kind of an analysis of showing from that video, the difference of what, the scale of what you're doing now, as opposed to what you presented then.
Yeah, we, you know, we did agree with, if we went back and analyzed it too, we agreed that there were some changes, that was a very early rendition of the architecture, which has evolved, and as a result of that, we came back and added those peaked roofs that you saw on the previous
I'm talking more about the scale, okay? About the height and how it was related. Just to, that video was done in a 3D, no different than this, so that it's pretty easy to document. So it'd be good to say, okay, here's what you presented then, and here's what you're presenting now, and to show the differences. That's what was discussed a couple of months ago.
Yeah, we did show them both, but, I mean, we
Did we do that now?
Yeah. And we agreed that there were some differences, the massing, the buildings stayed the same size, the buildings didn't get larger, but I think you're referring to the way the architecture broke them up?
I wasn't here last month, but before that, I had never seen anything that showed, you showed the video, and then you showed, we were showing now, and it was clearly different. And you agreed to that, that that was, it was a different look, it was larger than what was originally proposed. And that what we suggested you do is to come back with an analysis that showed what the difference was. Because at first you didn't believe there was a real difference, and then we talked about it going up to 35 feet and stuff like that, but that's not what you presented to the Board of Trustees. So for me at least, it's important to know what you presented to the Board of Trustees, what the heights and everything, the technical aspects of what you presented to them, as opposed to what you're proposing now.
Duly noted, I think
The page that Mark published.
You got me, you got me. Duly noted, I think we could do is go back to the minutes, I believe it was two meetings ago, and if it's not in there, then we can certainly discuss it in September. I just, my memories that we have, discuss that issue, but certainly, we'll go back in there.
Actually, just maybe two questions could help us. Did the footprint change from the original?
The shapes and the looks and crannies a little bit changed, but the sizes are the same size.
Right, so footprints are the same.
Yeah, they're still the same size.
Did you lower them, make them 35 feet?
In some instances we did.
So the quick analysis is?
As we looked at the grading, some of the buildings actually had to get, actually get shorter, because in some cases it's based on the existing grade or the proposed, whichever's worse. And early on, we just laid them on the proposed grade, so some of them had to come down.
So the quick analysis is?
Shorter, if anything, shorter. And, you know, the change that we talked about is a little bit in the architecture, we had a very early rendition of the architecture, and then they changed, and then when you came back and noted that you liked those peaked roofs, can you lower the chimneys a little? We came back and made those changes, and that's where we ended up. Now, this is the one unit that's a little different, because it's the walkout basement, and we're forced to push that upper floor into the roof, but the other ones have those peaked roofs and those things, so it's, we believe it's, you know, beautiful architecture, that's where we're trying to get with this.
The change that I remember, and, you know, the technical aspects of mass and business aside that George is concerned, but my concern, the difference between what the first video was in, in term of presentation, was that the first video had peaks and looks, and then we saw a presentation where they were gone, and now they're back. So now that's, it satisfies me, but George still has his questions on the technical aspects of what came back.
Okay.
I think some of them came back at the last meeting too.
Yeah, we didn't see this, they didn't happen to have this.
You want to see the current elevations of a regular unit, like this? So those are the current elevations, you got the front on the top with the garages, you know, and then the rear, the two-story, and none of these will exceed the 35 height limitation. So there's a lot of detail in those houses, and it's, granted, slightly different than what we started with, but we feel it's attractive, it's evolved.
Could we just go back to the Station Road view with the trees? No? The next one with all of the trees in place?
That's existing.
Okay, now, with those trees, is there a way of photoshopping, I'm sure, some of the potential trees that will be removed, and then the view with all of the foliage on the trees from
We could attempt to, the trees that are going to be removed are sort of the third layer in, so you got the first layer of trees that are along Station Road, then you got the whole massing of trees in the hill, the ones that are coming out are more central to the site, they're kind of setback. It's going to be very hard to find, to figure out which twig and branch goes to a tree that's back, you know, full of feedback for this mass.
Everyone's concerned about the view from South, from Broadway, going north on Broadway. And right now you can't see the buildings at all. And I'm just
Going north on Broadway?
Yes.
Coming from the south.
Coming from south to north.
You could see the fee building from South Broadway going, oh, from Station Road.
Right, now, Station Road and
You're seeing that here, right?
It's very dense right now.
In the summertime, you can't see.
In the summer, you don't see anything in the proposed condition either. The trees block it out. It's, you know, we were asked to do the winter views because that's kind of the worst case, but this is the existing fee building from Station Road in the winter.
Right.
In the summer, you won't see that, these trees all have leaves. I even went out in the spring and tried to take some pictures, and I was having trouble finding any place I could see the fee building, just when the trees were butted. So if you take a look now
Oh, I know, I've looked.
Yeah, you can't see the building. Yeah. So there's no tree, you know
So the trees haven't been marked as which one will be, ones will be removed, which trees will be removed?
No, we can do that though.
On the plan?
On the plan, we're identifying the plan, and there'll be, that's been refined for the next submission that's coming in September, we've been working with an arborist who's actually been identifying the, we went through and took the first shot, and then
Fine-tuned it.
Moons asked us to get a little more technical on it, so we actually got an arborist to go out and identify the condition of each tree, the genus, the species, you know, what he thought we should, you know, the problems with removing or not removing trees, so that's what we're working on now.
Okay.
We're working with him on that. So that'll come in in the next submission.
And that's, that removal, not removal is in relation to the overflow pipe from one of the detention basins, the one in the front?
The pipe that comes through the front? Yeah, there's one or two trees coming out as a result of that, but they were not the trees. We tried to stay about 20 feet from all the trees, and we did that.
Well, are you still proposing to come that way with the drainage, the buffer?
Yeah, we looked at it again last week, and it's really the most logical route, we're staying from, away from trees, we're only coming down, you know, about a 20-foot hill, and then it's fairly flat, maybe another 10 feet of grade change all the way to the brook from there. As opposed to if you come down the main slope, it's a drop of 50 feet within, you know, about 40 feet, it's like a one and a half on one slope, as opposed to the other slope that's more like a two or three on one, and then almost flat at the bottom. You know, you're going to have a lot less disturbance, because the benching is much easier in that location. You know, you don't have to, we probably have to have, coming down that slope, five grade change manholes that would have, each one would go down at least 10 feet deep, each one of those benches, to make that pipe come like this, and then drop them there, and come like this, and drop, to get down that 50 feet in a short distance. That's another thing that we did tell you we'll stake, and now that we've got that kind of fine-tuned, if you'd like, we'll be happy to stake that in the field, and maybe we take a look at it.
You need to stake the pipeline.
Stake the pipe in the field.
Yeah, because that's going through the Broadway buffer, and the other thing that I noticed on the plans is too, I just picked up on this, you're showing a sediment basin in the Broadway buffer, and as part of that, you're removing seven trees. And that is only a temporary sediment basin.
Those trees were getting removed as a result of the grading to put that house in a swell that comes around, but none of those trees are in good condition, they're all in poor condition, those trees.
Well, that's what I want to say, that's what I want to say. And then what is, what is actually on that area that you intend to put the sediment basin in? Because I didn't
It's just being restored, it was just, it was just a swell that came around the house to carry that drainage towards the stormwater management system, and in turn, we were going to make a little depression there as the settling basin, it was a logical spot, and then later on, it would be just restored, it would be a swell, and there would be landscaping in there. So we're putting in more, way more trees than we're actually taking out to construct those things.
My concern is those seven trees, I want to see what the condition is on those seven trees before we go ahead and approve putting the sediment basin in
Absolutely.
The Broadway buffer, and having all that grading going on in the Broadway buffer. Because again, you know, those are really issues, the idea of the Broadway buffer was to preserve what's there. And I don't want to keep going, we keep nudging into it, all right? Now we've got a drainage pipe going through there, and I want to see what that's going to look like, what the impact is on the trees through that. And now we've got a sediment basin that's going to be in there, temporary, and then you want to do grading into there. And then also then when you're widening the driveway, I understand you've got to widen the driveway, but I also noticed you're taking out several trees to widen the driveway, and then you're also getting into the drip line of, I think it's a 30 or 40-inch oak that's right on the bend of the driveway. And you're proposing to put a retaining wall in there too.
Yeah, we're trying to keep the road as far as possible, we had the arborist look at all these, all these issues, and make some recommendations about air spading the roots there so that we could put the wall in at the least impact on the tree, but we need to get the driveway in there, and there's really no other place, we've kept it as far away as we possibly can, and still get geometry on that driveway that'll work.
Well, that's what I said, before we make any final determination, we have to see the arborist's report, and I really want to get out there and see particularly where this, the drainage pipe is going through the
How about next week, over next week, we stake the pipe, and we tag the trees that are going to be removed, and then we meet up the following week and take a look at it?
Yeah, that should be okay.
Does that make sense?
But I also would like to, well, the arborist's there, and I want to have, I want you to have that information available so that Lucille Muns can take a look at that before we go out there.
She would, she noted she'd like to be out there too, and her memo when we do that walk. But, yeah, I mean, we recognize that there's some work, we're trying to minimize that work in the Broadway buffer, but we are going into there to do some selective removal of dead trees, to take out the vines and some of the stuff that's growing in there. And then that grading is really in a spot where there are really no good substantial trees, and I think it'll be nicer in the long run if we were to remove some of that undesirable growth and put in some nice healthy trees that are going to grow and fill that area in.
Yeah, well, that's important too, I mean, yeah, there needs to be a whole maintenance plan, well, a planting plan and a maintenance and operation plan for that Broadway buffer that needs to go on for several years to make sure it gets established. And that should be part of, and I think that should also be part of either the prospectus or the offering plan or the declaration that says that that will be taken, that will be that that will be taken, that will be undertaken by the homeowners association to make sure that that does happen. Again, because this Broadway buffer was a big thing, it's been an issue for this village and for over 30 years and the idea is to protect it and not to start going into it.
Understood, yeah. This is a residential development, this is where people are going to live.
Understood.
It's not a commercial development, people are going to want it to be beautiful, it's their front yards, their backyard, so they tend to take care of those things a little better.
But also get concerned too that in clearing up that Broadway buffer, you're going to remove a lot of the buffering and screening because there are a number of plants and invasives that are just growing in there now and are really, you know, screening things there. Those are going to be gone, but I want to see what kind of planting plan you're going to have and have Muntz review too, what kind of planting plan you're going to have in that Broadway buffer that will then regenerate and again, fill in the screening there.
And how many trees would have to be removed that you put in the sidewalk on Station Road? Is that what you think?
Not a lot, not a lot.
There's one that's just planted.
There's one that brand new tree, that's like a two-inch caliber, one and a half-inch caliber that's about to come out.
Because it looks like you may have some.
Yeah, but I took a look, it does drop off a little bit there in some spots, so we would have to do some kind of a detail where that, that's why we went with three feet because we're going to have to do something where it's a little bit thicker, hunched on the out, on the side away from the curb, so we got to look at that.
Then what you could do is...
I took a walk and it was not a lot of trees in the way there.
Well, what you could do then Anthony is before we have that walk for the Broadway buffer is, is tag the trees that you think will have to come down along Station Road so we can look at that at the same time.
Including the new town, Village Street, yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah.
It's not great, it's not great shape.
Sorry, I didn't understand planting a tree underneath a tree, but I guess there was a stump there, they figured, oh, there's a tree there.
That's exactly what it was. I think two big ones might have died and they put one little one in, yeah.
I'd like to see the section for this, this three-story that you're proposing on the hill because I assume that's been done.
We did a section through the site, not particularly of the building.
With the building, just interesting about how you're cutting and filling that.
Section through a building?
With the site.
Oh, with the site, oh, we can go.
You have a last one?
Yeah, yeah, we have a section.
I wasn't here.
It's the, yeah, so... There's a site cut through here. That's the A section, which is not showing up very well here. It's this one right here, so this would be the walkout condition here with the three stories and then it comes up and matches existing grade pretty closely here within a couple of feet and then it catches grade in the back and then it goes down. This slope stays existing the same in the back.
Okay.
And then, you know, on this side obviously is Irvington Estates.
This has nothing to do with what we were talking about, but it hit me that the detention basins, do you have cleanup facilities so they can be maintained so when they fill with silt that somebody...
Yeah, they have ports and they also are going to be pre-treated with CDS units, which are chambers, which have swirl chambers and debris baskets to catch anything before they go in there. So the idea is to keep the sediment and the garbage from going in there, so there's a pre-treatment chamber and then there are ports into those.
You can use a swirl concentrator or...
It's, they're hydrodynamic separators.
Yeah, somebody's got to clean them.
Those, they have manholes that you go in and they clean them out, yeah. That'll be in the stormwater maintenance agreement, you know.
Is it one big one or two little ones or...
I think we have three on the site right now because we have one down at the bottom.
You need a lot of flow for a big one, so it's better to have little ones.
Yeah, we have more little ones. We have one for this system, we've got one for this system and then we got one down at the bottom too where we couldn't treat it before it went into the, they made ones that are catch bases.
Also, I think that should be part of, again, any declaration or offering plan and so that the homeowners know that they are responsible for keeping those detention basins cleaned out.
Yeah, that'll also be part of the stormwater maintenance agreement that the applicant enters into with the village.
Right, but then I want to make sure that the homeowners know that they're responsible for that.
Okay.
The village will know they're responsible, they have to know.
Right.
But as I understand it too, is that based on the way this is done, that in essence, we can't ask them to do beyond what is required by code for any kind of drainage or retention and things like that, correct?
State law.
Right, but I know that, I remember with Continuum that we actually, because that was a special permit, that there was, it was more liberal in terms of making sure that this went, that the retention was even beyond what is the code. I'm just asking a question.
I don't know what you're saying.
I understand that because I was part of the special permit, whereas here, that's not part of the package, correct? We could, we could ask if they would do it, but they're not legally responsible to do it.
I would just note that the DEC requirements have gotten more and more and more stringent over the years. Every several years, they come out with another update which requires much more than it did several years ago, so it's pretty conservative what they're requiring of us right now, the laws.
At a minimum, you have to hold an entire one-year storm, so you're probably behind.
Yeah, there was a, you know, being...
Which isn't there now, so...
Right, the last time when we went through this, there was, you know, a decent amount of concern about what happens when there is a thousand-year storm every three months, that, you know, how is this going to be done? And I don't know the particulars, I'm not going to pretend to know that, but I do remember that they were, because it was a special permit and they wanted to get it approved, they were willing to go of and beyond what was required by code. And as I understand it now, that, you know, you don't have to do that. We can ask you, but you don't have to.
Well, what we do want them to do is make sure that they do no harm to the isolers and that they hopefully make it better, but that they pick up, make sure that you're picking up all your drainage and it's not fair at all over their property.
Yes, absolutely.
Getting back to the sidewalk, it's a steep drop-off, as you said, and the north side of the sidewalk is going to be fairly drop-off. Is it significant drop-off that somebody could fall off the sidewalk and get hurt?
Yeah, I was looking at that. No, you know, that's why we're keeping it as, you know, narrow, you know, as narrow as we can and still make it passable and we're going to have to look at that a little closer. I walked it, you know, some places it looks like you might have a little of a six-in shelf, we're going to have to put some soil against to make it, I don't think, you want to make it where it's a retaining wall and a railing. I think we just want to design as best we can and push a little soil up against there, but we'll have to look more closely at that. But it will be more than a standard sidewalk design where we just put four inches of concrete over eight inches of item four. It's going to be some kind of a hunch on that low side.
It's flat, yeah.
Yeah. Some spots it is. As you go closer to the, as you go closer to the aqueduct, there's plenty of room there. It's really more up in here where it falls off a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we were going to, Rich was going to talk a little bit about the parking lot at Field Point if you're open for that.
Yes.
Okay, one of the comments from Han Engineering was to look at a vehicle turning around under proposed conditions and essentially it's the same as existing conditions where this is Broadway here, you come in and you come in here and the vehicle would come in and turn here, back up and leave here. So what we're doing with, with our design is we are having the proposed striping consistent with the existing parallel spacing, striping, so that there's no change to the ability for vehicles to turn around through that area. Next screen is what we are proposing and what we have, and this is essentially what you saw last time, we just added a few more dimensions, but we are showing these as compact spaces and we did look at full size, which will be the next screen I'll show you. But the length from the, from the curb, in this case the wall, to the end of the striping measured this direction is essentially the same as, as the existing spaces over here. The difference is that these spaces have an overhang and in these spaces, we would be having a retaining wall because that is where the property line is. So, so essentially, we're matching the same conditions, but, but because of the lack of the overhang, that's why they designate it as compact spaces. Next slide, please.
Seven spaces there?
Uh, yes, I believe so, yes. And with this, we looked at if you were to take these same areas and, and have full-size spaces instead of compact spaces, there would be no net gain of spaces. Essentially, you're removing the same amount of parallel spaces as you're adding in angled spaces, so there's, there's no benefit to providing that, no major benefit to providing those full-size spaces in terms of trying to increase the overall number of spaces, which was our original objective.
So what about, what about looking on the other side of the parking area going towards Broadway? Were you going to take a look at that?
We did look at that as well. There's a, there's a grade change, there's a retaining wall along this area, there's a grade change going down there, there's a lot of landscaping, some taller evergreen trees, spruces and others and many trees would have to be removed and we may have an impact on the wall and it would add substantially to the cost as well.
So you're saying then the only way that you would be able to gain spaces here is without taking any of the property is to make them compact spaces?
That's correct.
And have you, have you spoken to DOT yet about how many spaces they would require our removing or your removing from Broadway to have adequate site distance?
We have not. We're going to be making a submission of them next week and we'll follow up with them and we did coordinate with your consultant AKRF and that when we do have a meeting with DOT, that they will attend that meeting as well.
I'm just afraid knowing the type of cars that are used here, that this is just going to turn into a real mess because although you're adding some spaces, you know, when someone brings their, like, there's someone with a very large pickup truck on Main Street and you see how difficult those, when the standard cars are parked on Main Street, that when a standard car attempts to park in this compact space and it'll be really hard to get around with that, so I don't know if this is really a...
What would we need to acquire in terms of additional land in order to be able to make those spaces full-size spaces?
About two feet.
Plus, plus some regrading.
Plus some regrading and, plus an access easement over another portion, right, to be able to do what?
Right, and there's an embankment.
We'd need a grading easement and then we need to take a part of the property that lies in the park.
You're saying the grading easement is the access easement to be able to do what?
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
Right, and I don't think, I can double check it, but the existing spaces on Broadway, I don't think would be your textbook full-size spaces either. I think they're considerably shorter, more like what the textbook would say a compact space should be.
I've just been noticing them more and more now. Some days, they're full of cars and other days, there's nobody out there and some days, there's two or three cars parked down there. But, yeah, I think we, yeah, I think we need to do something here though, to make this work. Whatever we lose on Broadway has to be gained someplace else and this is the perfect spot. I understand your concern too, George, I would, I would rather see full-size spaces there.
Yeah, I'm just afraid that someone, it's just not going to work and, so... You ticket someone when I'm going to get my car out after I've had dinner and I can't get out, that's... I'm just looking at the reality of it, that's all.
So how many spaces do we gain with this, Rich?
Uh, seven.
Seven, the total, the maximum that we would lose on Broadway?
Right.
Well, I think the first step is let's find out from DOT, what's the minimum number of spaces they would require to be lost?
Yeah, I asked that of AKRF, you know, well, you'll find out from DOT for sure and I said, what's the minimum, you know, what do you think are the fewer spaces that could be eliminated and keep things safe? And they said five or six. Uh, may turn out to be different, but...
That's not going to change, that's not going to change this because...
No, I mean, if it's, if it's five or six, it's not going to matter because the other way, it was the same number of spaces that's there now. So it seems that based on what you have, you've done so far, the only way you can make up five spaces is by, by this scheme. But anyway, I don't expect you're going to end up with a number much lower than that.
Okay. Well, I think that, then you have to start talking to the village. Is the village willing to make the initiative to try and acquire the property then? Or to get the easements so that we can build, the developer can build spaces that would be adequate size then? I think that's, that's what I would prefer to see. I prefer to see the situation be improved.
I'll bring it up to the administrator.
Do you think it would work if you did it up at the top, take out the existing spots and you made them more along the line there, so they're, they're back-to-back? And then along this area that you've done right here, you change the angle so that...
I'd even follow you, back-to-back.
Okay, so the way it is right now is...
Angle.
The angle parking, forget that right there, replace it with, if you use the, with the existing ones that are, I'll say back-to-back.
You mean the parallel?
The parallel parking, yeah. Put parallel parking at the, the top. You do the angle parking on the lower level, the inside there. Do you think you'd gain anything? No?
Probably lose because you have less room here, you have more room here for the area where you're getting more spaces per linear foot.
You still need a turnaround at the end.
Yes, that's the turnaround is the tough thing. And what's, what's further beyond that turnaround?
Slope, rock, retaining wall here and then this is a slope.
Was it a single-family house?
It's pretty close to the house.
Yeah. I think that's something that we...
Yeah, have to speak with DOT.
Find that out at least, but then we also have to see what else could be done, if there's something else that can do it to make it work. Did you have anything else, Rich, were you?
Oh, with that.
You're done? Okay. Well, then I think you're trying to get all the information together for, for the next planning board meeting so we have a full package then. We're also going to need whatever information is necessary to complete the C ground on this too.
Right.
Okay, so I think, we haven't talked much about it because I don't think there was much of an impact, but wildlife and those types of things really have to be looked at and, and some sort of verification as to what the impact is and if there's any mitigation that's needed for anything like that, if we're going to try and get a negative declaration out of this. I think also, I think some, some of the public raised the issue last time, and I don't know if it's in your original report, but I think it would be good to know, what are the total number of residents you anticipate here, the number of schoolchildren? I think you're going to, that should be part of the environmental review anyway, but I don't know, is that in your original submission? I think that's...
I don't think you had a school, do you have any results? No.
I think that should be included and also what your estimates are in water and sewer usage from the facility and then, there's going to have to be some influence infiltration offset from, who makes that determination as to what they need to do, what the developer needs to do to meet that three-to-one offset? Is that the village that decides what is to be done?
Yeah, we have to see what they propose.
You have to see what they propose and see if it fits your criteria.
I don't know if the county does, I mean, the county recommends that as part of our site, you know, the referral process, we usually recommend that, but I think it's, it's usually up to the municipality to determine what has to be done.
We have told you too, but there was a, yeah, there was a memorandum as a part of the stormwater, like, which is probably in keeping with the county.
All right, and so you've retained an arborist, you said, to look at all these issues and then I think what Lucille had mentioned, I think what some of the board members mentioned too, you probably need more specimen trees to be included in your planting plan in addition to a planting plan that is for a typical unit. And then again, for the Broadway buffer, a restoration plan for the Broadway buffer and a cleanup plan and then also the operation and maintenance plan for the Broadway buffer once it's, it's been cleaned up and replanted. Excuse me. Said impacts on wildlife and if there are any and if not, find what mitigation measures are needed. Again, the best route for the stormwater, I think we still need to work on that.
On that, did you want to...
Do you want to schedule, my sense is that your board wants to have the site visit before September meeting, right?
Before, next September, definitely, yeah.
So we can schedule it.
Just before the planning board meeting or just before our submission would make sense, that week before.
Yeah, correct.
Which would be not next week, but the following week, is that the week of 15th? Maybe the middle of that week, the 18th or 17th?
But Anthony, doesn't it make sense to do it before the submission in case anything comes up?
The submission's due the 24th. So we're saying if we did it the week of the 15th?
Oh, the 15th, okay. Okay, well, that would give you enough time to change your submission, okay.
Any of the board members want to accompany me on this? I definitely wanna go see this.
If I'm here.
Okay.
I can do, I would like to be there, but I can't do this 15th.
I know I'm gonna be away 14th and 15th.
Okay.
I don't know how far.
14th and 15th, that's a Sunday and a Monday. The 17th you're away, Sheila, and Tuesday. So how about the 18th, which is a Thursday? Does that work for you? All right. I will also get in touch with Lucille, or, yeah, I'll get in touch with Lucille, and ask her if she's good on the 18th then.
What time?
I'm thinking. Any suggestions? Towards the end of the afternoon?
That would be good.
Four thirty, four thirty?
Four thirty's okay, four o'clock?
Four, done.
Four, four P M. Yeah, on the 18th.
Four P M.
Okay, so stormwater needs to...okay, we're talking about number of residents, schoolchildren, then you're gonna be going to DOT, and you'll be back from DOT by the time we have this meeting?
I'm not certain.
Yeah, that may not be...
Enough time?
Right, but I'm not sure, does the board need, you know, the number of spaces, you know, for the neck deck?
You're gonna need it for the neck deck, and then we're also gonna need the mitigation measures then, too?
Well, the mitigation, yeah, the building design can still be finalized between the neck deck and final site point.
Well, except, you have to know it's doable, because right now, it seems that what you've got isn't acceptable to the board, that the only way to make it up is with compact spaces.
Even if you're replacing existing compact spaces?
Yes, part of the issue is, it's also, it's the village.
Yes.
Wait, I don't think those are compact spaces you were placing on Broadway.
If I can get, if I can imagine, I don't know.
No, but it doesn't really...
No, it doesn't matter, but...
It doesn't matter, no. In my opinion, no, it doesn't work, so...
But in order, in order for them not to be village-based, uh...
David, you've got, you were one of the hardest ones to pick up on the minutes.
In order, in order for those to not be compact spaces, the village is gonna have to either acquire land or take more land, you know, right, which is gonna take time. So, I mean, if that's the answer, then we have to get the village involved.
But how could you, how could you say it's not gonna have any impact on parking if the, whoever can get permission, I guess the village could get permission to, or buy land from Field Point, or whoever owns the property next door, when it's such a high, I mean, it's such a huge if, I mean, if they were done if they can't, what happens, you know? It's a problem.
If the, but if the spaces are, right now, are essentially compact spaces, and what we're saying is, we'll just add, we'll be adding seven more compact spaces...
But you're missing the point. It's, they're not gonna work, like George is mentioning, it just won't work if they're compact on the hill. It doesn't make a difference if you're replacing compact, compact won't work, according, you know, from his concern.
Well, if we, I guess if we can prove out that it is working right now, that's what I'm saying, if it's, existing conditions are working...
What's the configuration now? Can you go both to, do you have a site plan?
Parallel spaces.
Parallel on the Field Point side.
Right, right, they're shown there.
This is the curb line.
That's it.
These are the parallels, see the white lines, there are parallel stripes?
Yes, okay, same now.
So that's the curb line.
And so the difference...
So we're holding the same exact edge of the driveway, is sixteen and a half feet.
Right, and as far as mitigation, we've, our driveway has been there for years and years on Broadway, and I don't know when those parking spaces were striped out like that, but it's been an active driveway for an office building for many years.
But again, Rich, that, when it was an office building, it was not your typical office building. There were not cars coming and going from there every day, you know, not like you had one person per 300 square feet in that building, that's not the way it worked. I mean, there's never been heavy traffic coming out of that, that site in the 40 years I've lived in this village. So, so that really is, is comfortable there. I mean, I think it would be interesting, no, sure, if you can go out and measure those spaces on Broadway, and let us know what are the sizes of those spaces.
Okay.
And if you can have that by the time we have our meeting out in the field, that would be good.
That we can do.
Okay. I guess, you know, all these other comments relate to the parking lot, and then also the conceptual plans for the sidewalk along Station Road, and then also tagging what trees will have to come down on Station Road. I think that's it for me. Did any board members have any other comments?
The only thing I would say or add to it is the concept of closing the meeting, that a lot of people are still on vacation, and it really should be kept open until that is sort of, and that's just in principle, not just for this, I mean, I think it's important.
Well, I think even beyond that, I think just some of the issues that are still open here, I think that it needs to stay open, I think, yeah.
It's not ready enough.
So, did you have any comments, or Hillary?
It's just, in general, Main Street is, rolls up in August, and to put anything, to finalize anything before everyone is available, I don't think it's a good idea.
Hillary, any further comments?
No, I agree.
What, did you, okay, you know what, maybe before we do that, if there's any comments from the public, let's go to those first, and then we'll get back to you here, all right? Mrs. Isler?
Do you know my name?
Yeah.
Mrs. Isler, here. It's unfortunate, it's the middle of summer, because a number of my neighbors are away, some couldn't come. I've had communications from a number of them asking me to speak for them. We are members of this Field Park Neighborhood Association, which is immediately adjacent to Station Road, the sidewalks thereof, to this new property about to be built. And we're very much concerned. In brief, I think our main concerns are the density of the project, traffic, and water runoff, which I have this evening been told is still being worked on. In principle, none of us are opposed to multifamily living up there, but we strongly feel on a six-acre property to have upwards of a hundred new people moving in, and how that will impact on the neighborhood, in terms of traffic and many other ways, is scary to us. Some of us, I'm not one of them, object to the appearance, plus the density, some said unkindly, it's more fit for inner-city living than for a village like Irvington, and the appearance of Irvington as it has been. And we simply worry about the impact of all of this. To some of this multifamily on the six-acre property is maybe 12 or 15, but not 29, which you can expect. There will be upwards of a hundred people or more living up there, with parents leaving early in the morning and children going to school. Our impression of the traffic issue is different from what has been presented. We go up and down that way every day. Some of the experts have been standing there and observing traffic, but I don't think at the time that we are used to observing it. And so, all I can say for all of us who are not here tonight, that these three issues continue to present a major worry to us, and we simply worry how the entire area of Irvington, maybe all of Irvington, but particularly right around there, is gonna be impacted by having so many people moving into such a relatively condensed space.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to mention, Donald Isler, wanted to mention a few things that, in addition to what my mother said, is that there was this, a picture of the view up from Station Road, which showed from one angle at Station Road, it didn't show, I would be interested to see how the proposed buildings would look above our house, which is right on Station Road, under the property. It showed from the, you know, above the McConstern residence, you couldn't see that our house is also underneath the property, so it would be interesting to see that. The other thing is, and we appreciate that you're concerned with the drainage problem that could impact us, the other thing is, is when I hear about trees taking, coming down, there are enormous trees on that hill, and we have to be concerned about trees from that property at the top of the hill falling down on us, or knocking down some of the huge trees below them on our property, which could land on the house. So these are things that I think have to be considered, and there has to be answers as to how, these things would impact on us, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? No? Marian, do you want to make a few comments?
Yeah, I had a couple. One is about the ARB. I had spoken to you about going before the ARB. The ARB had indicated the last time they were there that they wanted to see them before everything, before it was finalized here. They should go back for that. In addition to which, the ARB has to approve any changes to the McConstern House, because they are including that in the, they got a coverage waiver for that part of it, so that the changes have to be approved by the ARB, and I think you need to know that sooner rather than later, because it could, it could change things. And the other thing, just, there's a whole lot to be done before September, if you wanna move this thing along. There's really an enormous amount that has to be done. You just, and I just wanna make sure everybody understands that you can't possibly issue a negative declaration until all these issues are resolved, until the drainage is resolved, not till they submit drainage information, but that it's resolved to the satisfaction of the engineers, that the landscaping and the impacts on the land are resolved to the satisfaction of our landscape consultant, of course, in addition to this board, and that the traffic is resolved to the satisfaction of the board and our traffic engineers. So there's a lot to be, a lot to be done, and no action can be taken, the board can't even issue preliminary subdivision approval, plat approval, until secret's done. And all those things have to be resolved before secret. Once the, and they need, you need to get plat approval sooner rather than later, because you gotta go to the county and get DOH, and I know, I know the goal was kind of to have this done, you know, at least have approvals on the, so there could be building permits on the affordable by the end of the year to help with the villagers' thing, but the way this is going, I just don't see how it's gonna happen. So I just urge you to do huge, if you want to move this along, you've got an enormous amount of stuff to get done by September, and urge you to, you know, start tomorrow, and if there's stuff that you can work out with Han before you make your final submission to do what can be done. Have you already, have you gone to the ARB yet, or applied to the ARB?
We're applying later this month, so we're gonna hit the August, the second August meeting in August. I think it's the 22nd.
Yeah, okay, it just, it just seems maybe a little odd. I know you, the reason I mentioned the September meeting is you said that was your goal. I would've thought that might've made sense had we had submissions, had we had new material this month and last month, but we haven't had any material in a few months, so...
Well, the ARB, their determination is whether or not the changes to the McConstern building will affect the local historic significance, so that...
Right, right, no, but it, everything hangs on everything else, because if they say no, and you can't make those changes, you may have to provide your affordable someplace else. You know what I mean? It really, I mean, one of these stands alone, but other things, they're dependent on that. So I think you've got a lot to, a lot to cover before this board can act on the neck deck, and I know, I know the board's already decided, but you can't, you couldn't, if you were gonna close the public hearing, I'd stop and say, you can't, there's too much information you need.
Okay, did, any other comments? No? I think we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Okay.
All right, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.